Okay, I'd like to call to order the September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Del Rio Planning Commission. Karen, can you do roll call? Are you there, Karen? 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 First, Karen.
I think she might have dropped off.
Let me text her.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Wood.
Here.
Commissioner Getzold's absent. Commissioner Burger.
Here.
Commissioner Krieger.
Here.
Commissioner Jack Shaw.
Here.
Commissioner Reggsdale Cronin.
Here.
Chairman Hayworth.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to lead everybody in the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, visible with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
Thank you, everybody. Okay. Go out to the commission consent agenda. Everybody looked it over. Any questions, comments?
None for me.
No? Okay, seeing none, motion to accept.
I'll make the motion to accept.
Thank you. Chair, just for the record, would you go out to public comment on the consent agenda, please?
I'm sorry, yes. Any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, does that motion still stand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, time for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the commission on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. The public may comment on any other matter listed on the may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered by the commission. There will be a time limit of not more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken by the commission on matters brought up under this item, and all comments will be referred to staff. So do we have any public comment from anybody on something other than what we're hearing tonight? Seeing none? Close public comment. Okay, back out to the commission. Building reports. Any questions, comments?
Just, I think we have a motion to accept the consent agenda that was never voted on. I don't know if that's
We don't need to. We don't need to put on it. Need comments on the reports, building report.
Chairman, if I may, on the consent agenda, I have a first and a second, but we did not do a roll call vote.
Okay, I am corrected then. You go ahead.
Okay, so I thought I heard Commissioner Burger was the first and Commissioner Krieger was the second. And then if I could, Commissioner Wood.
Hi.
Commissioner Jack Shaw.
Hi.
Commissioner Burger.
Hi.
Commissioner Krieger.
Hi.
Commissioner Reggsdale Cronin.
All abstain as I wasn't here.
Chair Hayworth.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, back to the building report. You have reports, any comments, questions, clarification? Go out to public comment on building reports. Okay, seeing no vote required on that. Full business, there is none. So new business. We have applicant Kenneth Turgon. A R C twenty-two dash zero one and variance twenty-two dash zero two. Project description, request architectural review and variance review for proposed redesign based on comments from eight, ten, twenty-two planning commission meeting. Request architectural approval for residential addition to an existing thousand fifty-nine square foot single-story residence with two hundred and seventy square foot single-car garage. Proposing an additional two hundred and fifty-eight square feet for a two-car garage, two hundred and one square feet to the first level of the main residence and eight hundred and fifty-six square feet to the second level, requesting variance approval for an increase in allowable floor area to twenty-seven hundred and seventy-six square feet from allowable twenty-seven hundred square feet. So we'll turn it over to the applicant.
Chair Hayworth, thank you very much. I appreciate being able to talk to you all and resubmit our project from our last meeting. I have to do full disclosure here. I do know Bill Reggsdale Cronin here, he and I are pretty good friends. But that doesn't impact this project, but I just have to put full disclosure out there. If I can share my screen, I would love to do that, and that way I can kind of go through the plans real quick with all of you and go over the changes that we've done because we've in our, in my opinion, we've met everything except for the fact that we're just asking for a little bit more square footage as far as the allowable. So if I don't
You can share your screen, Ken.
Karen, can you do that?
You can share your screen.
How do I do that? Oh, there it is. Share screen. I have to make sure that I know if anything open that's questionable. I'm kidding. All right, so I go to, where do I do that? Oh, boy. It's going to my advanced. I don't know why it's going to my calendar. I don't want it on my calendar. Hold on, let me, let me make sure I open up what I got before I share it. Oh, it's got my calendar open, that's why. Sorry. So open up this. Okay, now. Am I still on with you guys?
Yeah.
All right, make sure there we are. One. There we go, share screen. And I'm gonna share this with you. Okay, so you guys all have this, and we did take into account all the comments that you got, that the planning commission brought in and as well as the adjacent neighbors. And we took it to heart and basically redesigned the project to accommodate the revisions. And I do have to say thank you for the approval on the initial the variance one or variance two, whatever that was, for the encroachment of the garage, which I was, I thought was great, and thank you for approving that. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna walk you through. So this was the existing, can you guys see my, you see my cursor? So this is, this is what we have right now. And what we had before was that the, it was a three-car garage that took over this whole thing. And we heard, you know, loudly from the commission that, you know, it's a big frontage of garage and it's, it was taking down a tree that is a healthy tree, and what we decided to do was reduce the garage down from two to, from three to two and maintain basically every tree on the property. So the frontage stays now the same except for the addition of the two-car garage. And now we also maintain a front yard which will be landscaped as well, so that the trees that are existing, which is one and two, are going to stay. So that was kind of contention number one. As we walked down, I'm not gonna go through the existing plans, I'm gonna go through the new plans, and what we did was we actually redesigned the whole second floor, and that's why we kind of bubbled this. And we designed, redesigned the second floor in order to accommodate the windows that were along this side. And originally, if you guys, if everybody recalls, we had bedrooms that were on this side. And what we did was we brought the bathrooms and a closet onto the side with higher windows, which now don't really impact the adjacent neighbors because the windows basically are at head height and a bathroom is not normally occupied anyway, so it's not like people are gonna be staring in and those windows are gonna be for privacy only anyway. So that is what we ended up doing. The first floor remains relatively the same, other than we removed the the storage that was underneath. So what I'd like to really stress here is that we originally came in with a variance for an addition of seven hundred and eighty square feet onto this property at twenty-seven hundred, and what we've done is we reduced it seven hundred and four square feet to ask for a mere seventy-six square feet. And the only reason that we're asking for that is that because of the actual footprint of the building itself, it makes it structurally easier to build this based upon that. And so we're not asking for it because we're being frivolous, we're asking for it to make it structurally easy to build this. So, and we're not asking for anything outside of what is required by the city. So if we look at the elevations, as I said, we now have these just clear story windows that are up high, that are at the the neighbor's property, which they were very concerned because they were full height and they were in a bedroom, and people could stand there and, you know, basically look into their, their, their living room and they were really concerned about that. And so we wanted to address that and raise those windows up and make those windows non-intrusive, if you will. The rest of the building stays the same. The materials are all here, basically it's cement plaster, we have stone veneer that runs around in certain areas. And as we said, we have aluminum frame windows and the garage as it is. We're asking for a very small amount of a variance on this, and I believe that we've come back to you with a significant reduction based upon your comments from last time, and I believe that this project is now in the realm of approval. So with that, if anybody has any questions, I can de-share my, my my, my screen if that's what is required, because you all have the plans in front of you.
Okay, so let's go out to the commission then for questions and comments. We'll start with Commissioner Reggsdale Cronin. You're muted, Bill.
Yeah, sorry about that. I clicked it, but it didn't listen to me. I like the changes. I do like the loss of the garage. It was a big giant. Looked like a warehouse kind of hanger thing on the front. I like it. There was down to two, and I don't think that seventy-six feet over the twenty-seven hundred limit is enough to void the project. It looks like a pretty nice project, the redesign of the windows for the neighbors. Privacy, I think, is really good. So at this point, unless somebody convinces me different, I'm in favor of the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Woods.
Yeah, I like how you took the windows into consideration for the neighbors. Really appreciate that. That's, that was a nice thing to do, and leaving the trees, and I think downsizing the garage. You really couldn't get it down the seventy-six square feet?
I, you know what?
I'm having a hard time.
So hard.
Twenty-seven hundred, I gotta be honest.
I gave you, I gave you the trees, I, I thought of you and I'm like, come on, I gotta give her the trees. The problem is that the footage of the building itself makes it structurally problematic if we remove the sixty, the seventy-six square feet. I looked at it every way to Sunday. And to get the garage to be reasonable, and we kept that garage down to the smallest square footage we could. It, I, I really did, I think seven hundred and four square feet was a college effort.
So, but aren't you taking the whole house down and rebuilding?
No, 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 hundred percent, no. We don't want it. And the reason we can't, the reason we can't is that we don't want to have to go into the fire sprinkler thing. So if we raise the whole house, we have to then get another water meter and it just opens up another can of worms. So what I'm trying to do here is just try to condense everything the best that we can and work with the footprint that we have, and that's really what gives us the, that, that just lousy seventy-six square feet. I mean, I'm not, we're not asking
Off the top.
Yeah, I honestly, I would, I would do it, but it just, I'm like, it's, it's just so hard to get there.
Hmm, and you know, it's an interesting design. I noticed there's no bathroom on the same floor as the kitchen. You have to go through the bedrooms to get to the bathroom.
Well, you could talk, you could talk to the water management district about that. I mean, we don't have, we, trust me, the homeowners, the homeowners aren't happy about that. I mean, we
The bathroom to that side of the wall to make the hampers happy. So we previously have the bathroom accessible from the hallway upstairs for guests to use. We had to get rid of that, so the hampers would be happy. So it definitely isn't our dream plan. We don't have a hallway even upstairs anymore. We did everything we could and spent about ten thousand dollars between story poles and architects fees just to appease the neighbors. So we're at seventy-six square feet over. And it's, I promise you, we don't even have a hallway upstairs. You come to the top of our landing and you're in our bedrooms. It's not the best plan, but it's the only one that we could come up with to have bathrooms and closets along their side of the, the house because they were so upset.
Okay, then. Thank you.
Commissioner Burger, you had your hand up.
Um. I, I think an engineer could, could figure out the structure for seventy-six square feet. But I'm looking at something a little different here. I'm looking at the notice of public hearing and I'm doing the math here and I'm seeing twenty-six hundred and forty-four square feet, which is shy of fifty-six. Then looking at the cover page of the plans, I'm looking at a garage of proposal of five hundred and twenty-eight square feet, not six hundred and two, which is almost puts them where they are. I'm confused on what it's supposed to be. They're, they're three, they're three feet over at that point, not seventy-six.
Square feet. I, I would agree with you. I did that math check. I just wanted to keep the math where it was.
Quite frankly. Based on this, the, this is not, we're not looking at an accurate proposal.
Well, we're looking at an accurate proposal based upon what the square footage was. I mean, if, if, if we want to condition it and I can come back, I can literally just change the square footage, not a big deal. The square footage of the, of the garage based upon the, the storage and whatnot, I think we're, we're within. I think what we're, we're kind of hashing things about is that we've come back.
We're not hashing anything. What I'm trying to say is if the numbers are true, what I'm seeing, you're almost there. So that's why it's difficult for me to make a decision just based on the conflicting numbers here. So if it's twenty-seven hundred and three square feet, I'm sitting there going, hmm, if it's twenty-seven hundred and seventy-six square feet, I have a totally different thought process. My thought process at twenty-seven hundred and seventy-six square feet is what's the next, I mean, what's the next step? Are we gonna ask for more? Somebody else can ask for more. It's a gateway to creating McMansions. So, and, and going to that, I mean, we are a small city with small lots. Going to that, I'm, I'm challenged, if I'm not mistaken, the height of the garages is twelve feet, the roof line. And it's a, it's a continuous roof line. It's not a peak proof line, so from, from the street, please, it's very imposing. And I, I, so I have, I have two issues. A, what is the true square footage? Because if we're talking about three feet, it's different than seventy-six, you know. And then my second issue is gonna be with, with the height of the garage. It's from, from, from the architectural review standpoint, it's, it's very imposing and it's, you know, it's a square rectangle, if you will. It's not, it's not a peaked multi-elevation roof line. So I'm challenged. What's, what's the correct answer? I can go with what you're telling me or I can go with what's on paper. I'm very challenged.
Well, let me, if I can interrupt, Aaron's got her hand up. She might be able to clarify some of this stuff.
We're great.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, commissioners and members of the public. I'm Erin Harwin with Denise Stop and Associates. We've been assisting as an extension of city staff to review the plans, and we also noticed, great, great eye, Commissioner Burger. The front page of the application form and the variance request and the cover sheet of the plan set had some funny math in it, and I'll give Ken the benefit of doubt, probably working hard back and forth with the applicants trying to move the numbers around. But so the notice had copied the, the errors from the application form, unfortunately, and provided a incorrect number for the addition to the first floor and also the garage. However, the square footage in the notice and in the staff report is all correct. The plan sheets themselves are correct, but the, the cover sheet is incorrect as well. So it is adding three hundred and thirty-two square feet to the garage, not two hundred and something. And it's, okay, so just wanted to walk you through it, but the numbers in the staff report are correct.
I'm, I'm not infallible. I probably did not pick up the, the, the front sheet, and I apologize for that. It did change the numbers on the site plan and whatnot, but that being said, seventy-six square feet is essentially a small closet. It's, we're not asking for a lot. And again, we were asking for like seven eighty at, at the, at the onslaught of the project, and we're not asking for a lot of leeway on this. And while, while Commissioner Burger, you, you, you do point out that, you know, and we could work it out with, with an engineer. It just, it's, it's very difficult with the, a square box and having a stair to get to a second floor that we're carving out that it, it just, it's, it's, it's really difficult to the point where it makes it structurally infeasible to, to actually build on that side. So with regards to the, 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 the garage, the way it is, we're not, we don't have a peaked roof. It's a flat roof on the garage, and it's just matching the existing elevation, which you've already approved as a variance to match that. So I don't see that as an issue. I think what is that issue is, is just understanding that the seventy-six square feet is all we're asking for.
Anything more, Commissioner Burger?
I'm sorry?
Anything more?
No, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Jack Shaw.
Um, yeah, I guess at this point I agree with Mike a whole bunch. You know, it's only seventy-six square feet. Maybe the next guy will say, you know, that applies, it's only ninety square feet, and the next guy will go, it's only a hundred square feet. And I always worry about slippery slopes, and I'm afraid we're gonna be getting into it. I don't know how you can get rid of seventy-six square feet, perhaps the garage. But anyway, I've, I've got some other issues, but but I just wanted to bring up, I agree with Mike in the, the numbers weren't quite right. That's all for right now.
Hey, thank you. Commissioner Krieger.
Yeah, my comments were pretty much echoed Commissioner Rexel Cronin's and Commissioner Woods to a certain extent. I, you know, I look at what they've done. I really appreciate the, the effort to drop it down. Was surprised to see the windows on that side. That was very accommodating and privacy is sort of an issue for me, and you're building over your neighbor's house is always a little problematic, so I really appreciate that effort. And I don't know, I look at it, it's, that's why we're here to make decisions. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's a couple percent variation. I know, to me, they've made a good effort. It's, it's all for close. I'm not that inclined to toss out a project for, you know, two percent. I don't know that finding the seventy-six feet and taking it out would make any difference to how it looks. I mean, it is what it is, and may not be to all of our taste, but, you know, I wouldn't throw it out just for, for something that small, and I don't, I don't think it'd make any difference. You know, anyway, like I said, so at this point, I just want to say I do appreciate the effort. It's actually a little bit more than I expected to see, and and right now, I'm not, I'll keep an open mind, like Commissioner Rexel Cronin, and see what the other commissioners, you know, have to say on it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, we'll go to public comment.
We'd like to go if we could.
Sure.
Well, thank you for this, for seeing us this evening. I think we appreciate that the windows have been changed and they're not that overlooked, isn't that way? That's, that's fantastic.
Are they true clear story? Are they above eye level? Or are they, are they down so you can see out? Because we don't, you know, they're just worried about a scene which we wouldn't be looking anyway, it's more that we then looking out.
I'm six, I'm six with four, and my eyes would be about right there. And they're not, and they're not six with four. You've met them.
Thank you for that. If you look at the plan, I encourage you to look at it. The high window is in my shower, so I will be naked. I promise I'm not gonna look at you while I'm naked. And then the ones in the bedroom and the bathroom, again, we moved all your closets. There's no windows there at all, and then there's one window by our vanity. It is over the counter, so nobody physically can even stand in front of that window. It is over the counter and up. So, I mean, we spent about ten grand to try to make this right for you guys.
You know, we appreciate, we appreciate that, but just as much as you want to have light in your house physically, you're denying us light in our house by overshadowing it. But we do appreciate that you did put the clear story windows in.
Yeah, and actually, we're under the height, so we, we did take your light into consideration. That's why we didn't go full height.
Our house is gonna be cold in winter. You're gonna completely overshadow our home.
Generally, generally, public comment, it's at the discretion of the chair, but generally, it's not a volley back and forth. It's, you know, people can, can state and not talk over each other so we can have a clear record. It's at the chairman's discretion, but just thought I would point that out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
I think our other concern is, is that there was a balcony on the one side that if you were to walk out on it, which I assume you can, because there's a glass railing. You can see all the way into our front entry and all the way around like a hundred and eighty degrees almost our property. And now they've added another balcony on the other side because the square, because the square footage is made smaller. So there's another balcony that also would look over directly into our, and if you look at the, the way the trees have been drawn on the drawing, it looks like it's just directly like, it's like head level, you could look over easily, anybody at any height and see into our area. So those, that privacy concern is one that we have with the, with the, with the balconies.
It's a big imposing house. We'd like to live in our house and have the same privacy as we always had, and we don't understand why this, this needs to be on this side and they need to be overlooking. I can understand if it's light, but I'm saying at the same time, they're denying us, us light, and they have, you know, other than sorry. You know, it will change the way that we heat and we get light into our home. It's a big imposing house, and I'm happy that they're having a good build. You know, and they're gonna have an extension house, but I didn't expect to see something that imposing. We literally go out to our front door and we look at
And there it is.
And it's almost because we're much lower than them. It's almost like looking at a three-story apartment building. Right by our front door, that's what we see. Most of you have a road and a sidewalk in between you and the next door neighbor's front door. We don't, we have them right there looking in.
Because it's a side entry to the house. So when we walk out, that's what we see straight up. And then there's two balconies on either side that can look and you can see the entry. We can't come in and out of our house without being within an eyeshot of two balconies.
I don't understand. They have a big grate room there, which I don't understand why they can't get a hallway because they've got a big overlook over a grate room. Why isn't that, you know, if they set it back a bit and had it in that area, but they've got to have a giant grate room, you know. As long as they're okay, I don't see us, you know, it's, we've got some consideration because they still want to get the plans through, but they haven't considered the impact that they've done on us.
Please, Ms. Borges.
So they haven't, they haven't really considered. They've only been almost forced to consider, but they haven't considered what they're doing to our home. You know, we've got that, they could have set that second floor over the, what they've got now, which is a grate room, and they could also put a hallway where that grate wall, that overlook of that grate room is. There's a giant overlook. You know, I don't see the lack of square footage to, to There's a giant overlook, you know, I don't see the lack of square footage to 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 build in that area.
We're gonna.
To make a hallway.
Okay, was that was that the extent of your comments?
We'd like to know when the wall is going to be discussed, is that next meeting, the wall and the the engineering to of the wall that's on on between us?
Everything will be handled here, if you're talking about the engineering, that will be done and handled with the plan check and the engineering work that they'll have to do.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because we do have a fifty-three-foot single block retaining wall and we need to make sure that that's not because their house is going to fall into ours, we we want to make sure that it can hold up with the extra weight and with seventeen trees growing above it. I don't care how they're clipped, we're gonna have branches overcoming our house unless Sean is going to come over here and pay for maintenance. There's, it's at a height, we've got like a ten fifteen-foot wall with a fence on it and their trees will be above that with their branches coming over. He may fence it on, he may cut it on their side, but who's going to cut it on our side? I'm sure my husband's not going to get on the ladder and be able to cut cut that down, that's fifty-three feet worth of tree limbs, you know. And I I I this.
I've let you, I've let you talk way way longer than we typically.
I'm so sorry. But it really is a big thing for us. Being mocked to by, you know, the neighbors sitting there mocking us and, you know, and making, because we do have concerns. We have to live next door and it does affect how we live in our home.
Certainly, and don't, you have, all the engineering stuff will be done when they submit all their plans, so I don't think you have anything to worry about there. So I realized that I didn't ask questions when I, when we were around here, so I just have one question, how did, how did you make up the square footage? That from your first plan to this plan?
Well, we lost the the garage and then we lost the storage that was underneath the garage. And that was basically what gave that seven hundred and eight square foot that 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 we kind of removed. And then we kind of moved a little, a couple of things around just to make sure that we can get this to to accommodate the best that we can to, if it, Chair, if you will, if I can just respond to the hampers. You know, we 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 are, it's a Bayrate project when it comes to the height, we're actually under the height that's allowed and it's not the Borges's fault that the Harpers or the Hampers property is is lower. I mean, that this is just what is allowed, so height-wise, this isn't an issue. What the issue was 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 windows and in in my opinion, the hampers brought up the last time was the windows, where the windows that were looking into their space. And we've addressed that one hundred percent. And balconies were never an issue, that was not brought up last time.
We mentioned it last time.
I'm gonna have to stop this now, Mr. Turgeon, because we're, this is not the venue, I was letting you have so, okay. So thank you. Was there any further public comment?
I'd like to say something.
Thank you.
I'm Jenna Harris, I live across the street. It's just the nature of this street that one house is much higher as a single story than the house next door. If you look at the house on the other side of the hampers, their house is blocking the sun to the house on the other side. And just as it goes down the line of the street, it's just the nature of the street. Morning sun is only a few hours before it gets to if you did a sun study. You'd still get enough sun in the morning. The house next to me blocks the sun in the morning, but once it like an hour to go by there's plenty of sun. That's just I, how I feel, it's just the nature of this neighborhood. It's you shouldn't be have to, as having an architectural background, you shouldn't have to accommodate. Not saying not accommodate for the sun factor, but it's just the nature of it. You go to houses that are in tract homes, there's literally ten feet in between some of these houses, windows that are looking into other windows. Sun's being blocked, it's just the nature of the beast in this day and age.
That it? Thank you, thanks for your comments. Okay, any further public comment? Yep, seeing none, okay, we'll close public comment, we're going to go out to comments by Commissioner, we'll start with Mr. Rexel Cronin.
Yeah, I stick with my guns pretty much and I understand where Mr. Turgeon's talking about, you've got a box and you're trying to set another box on top of it. And if you try to move that top box in any direction, you're going to lose downstairs. So he's talking about simple building, it's not engineering, it's not anything drastic is you've got a box of X square feet and you're trying to set another one on top of it, if I'm correct. And if you try to make that upper box smaller, you're going to have to do other another wall, you're going to have to do foundation work. There's a lot of things that it, and it also takes away from square footage down there. Trying to lose seventy-six square feet, it it's such a small amount, it becomes extremely difficult to try and lose seventy-six square feet. If it was a couple hundred or, you know, five or six hundred square feet, yeah, you could suck the thing back in, build a pony wall, do whatever you gotta do. So and and going down the slippery slope, that's why we have variances and that's why we look at each single variance and we talk about it and we debate it and we look at it, we're not approving, everybody gets seventy-six more square feet, we're approving seventy-six square feet on this project. So I think, yeah, it's a slippery slope, the next guy might want eighty square feet, but if he's got a valid reason for the eighty square feet, I think you look at it. If he doesn't have a valid reason for it, you don't approve it. So anyway, that's my two cents worth, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Jack Show.
Yeah, I can't, I can't disagree with what was just said, it's seventy-six square feet. Slippery slope, they've done a pretty good job and so I agree that at some point you know, they've done a good job and I lean both ways. But I'll give it to them, I have some other concerns though. I I think the garage is a little high, it'd be nice if you could drop that down by ten, uh ten feet. A couple of feet might change that impact a little bit. I am curious to know about the retaining wall, I'd like to see an engineer look at that and see whether it's it's good enough, you know, I told, I was told years ago that the retaining wall, whoever's the responsibility is, who's ever property. It holds up, it's their responsibility, so I would like like to make sure that that is in in the approval that if something happens down the road, that it's their responsibility. And make sure that 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 wall that's there is okay. Next item is the trees, there is a huge amount of trees and we're talking about sunlight. How tall will those trees get and will they trim them down to the height of the house or will they let them continually grow and further block out light? The and then back to who's going to be responsible for trimming them on the neighbor's side, on the hamper's side. You know, how how's that going to work out? So that's another another thing that I would worry about, I don't expect the hampers to be trimming their trees with a, you know, a twenty-foot ladder or having a gardener at their their cost, so I'd like to see how that is handled, so those are the my concerns and the only thing that I would like to see a couple of feet taken off that height of the garage. And the seventy-six square feet. If they can see to a few other things there, I would not have a problem with the seventy-six square feet. That's all.
Thanks George. Commissioner Burger.
I I I still have an issue with the seventy-six square feet and I, to me, it's still the gateway. And and still the height of the garage and being that it's a re-proposal, I I think that element can come back in. Can of worms. I look online to three different online real estate sites and they list a lot square footage of fifty-six hundred and sixty-two square feet to fifty-six hundred and sixty-three square feet. I I think we need to go back and look at clarification, because if if that is true, then we're battling an argument that's moot at this moment. That's it.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Burger, Commissioner Krieger.
Yeah, pretty much still agreeing with what Commissioner Rexel Cronin has saying, the and you know, Commissioner Jack Charles, I believe in the past, we've put contingencies on there about the engineering report has to if I recall, there was one a couple of years ago where we put that, you know, contingency into the approval that they you know, had to verify that the wall was sound and wouldn't be disturbed by the work, so I would think that's something that's probably probably handled in the engineering anyway, but I think, I don't think there was any reason we couldn't specify that in our approval as a contingency, you know, the the privacy thing's a big deal, I mean, we had you guys all remember, you know, down in Portola, you know, your Sogo, same kind of issue, Bray Place recently with building up privacy issues. It's yeah, we have conflicting interest here and we just have to go with what the what guidance we have and really the question is you know, the seventy-six feet is less than three percent, closer to two percent really, so I don't really think that everything that they've done to to meet our request that I I wouldn't in good faith personally go back and dogpommel on there, I mean, I think they've they've met our our they are asked and I think I would at this point be willing to approve it, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Commissioner Krieger, Commissioner Wood.
Yeah, um I really do, the podocarpus, you guys really, I don't know if you know what, I know you think I'm crazy about this whole thing, I've been, I've been in landscaping for twenty years. And those over time, they get huge, and so I'm just saying that's something that you might want to consider too, not just for your neighbor, but for your own sake. Anyway, so that's that and as well, the, you know, it's it's really sad, you couldn't get down to that twenty-seven. And we'll see, is there, is there the site, we're saying the square footage of the lot is, and that was, it was surveyed? I don't know, yeah, okay, all right, thank you, that's no comment.
Chair, hey, with her, am I going to be able to just comment on the garage, it seems like the garage was was an issue and I can, I can speak to that real quickly if you would allow me.
You know, you've had, you've had plenty of opportunity to talk to that, that point, so.
Usually we get to respond as the applicant to to comments from the commission.
You had, you had your opportunity early on and it's, let us finish what we're doing here, we'll consider, we'll consider that. So it comes back to me now, yeah, I have a problem with the seventy-six square feet. I think it's a slippery slope, I think, yeah, case by case, I agree with you, right, Mr. Rexel Cronin, but this is a pretty imposing piece, if you drive down Carlton or down Canyon Del Ray from the west. It's pretty imposing, the front of the house with the garage, twelve twelve feet tall. I mean, I look, I looked, looked around at garages and there's no one that I've seen that has a flat roof garage that's twelve feet tall. So, you know, I'm, you know, we can, we can do a a motion on this that has some elements in it that to mitigate some of this stuff. City Manager Gerton, should I turn this over to Erin Hardwine, she's got her hand up for some guidance here, so go ahead, Erin.
You read my mind, thanks Chair, um yeah, just a reminder that if you approve or deny, whatever you decide on that variance of the additional seventy-six square feet, we need to be sure to address each of the criterion A, B, and C. And in in the findings and in our motion. So if everyone can just revisit that on the second page of the staff report, A, B, and C, just be sure that the rationale is in the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to entertain a motion from the commission. I can have somebody make a motion. Don't everybody speak at once?
I can, I'm happy to start.
But Mike.
My motion would be to deny the twenty-seven hundred and seventy-six square feet. Reduce it to twenty-seven hundred, I, from the plans, I don't see any any issue with taking that square footage, as is pointed out, it's small size of a closet out of the garage. It wouldn't affect the living area whatsoever. We have small garages, we have small lots, we live in Delrayx, it's part of, it's part of what it is. My motion also would say to reduce the height of the garage to ten feet. And I think we all, I think also, I don't know how we'd put this in a motion. But I I we'd we'd have to somehow confirm again or whether it's, the city has to do it or what, but when I'm seeing public online records contesting the six thousand square foot lot, we have an issue right there, I might be totally wrong. I know, I know that the applicants don't want to hear that, but we need to be accurate on this. It could be a problem for the future as well, so that's my motion. I don't see any any hardship in reducing the size of the garage. I don't think it affects really the, how they can enjoy the home. You don't live in the garage, it's plain, seventy-six square feet won't affect them parking their cars. And even reducing with a flat roof, even reducing the height of the garage isn't going to affect their ability to park their vehicle in the garage. And then I'm just trying to satisfy all all A, B, and C here.
We're we're talking about two, we're talking about the architectural review and the variance, so.
That's true.
So anyhow, that's what I propose, I say, I say knock it down to twenty-seven hundred square feet.
And I I I don't see a need for a ten or twelve-foot high roof line, we're ten will suffice. Anya, it it's imposing and that's, that's my architectural redirect, that's what I, how I feel about that.
And I request as the applicant again, so we don't have to come back. Can you approve this with conditions?
Just let.
Well, well, I I understand that, but you didn't.
Please wait, please wait.
We're, I'm going to get through and let the commissioners talk to this point and we'll come back to you if we need to. Okay, do I have a second on this and we'll come back for discussion to the commission?
I'll second.
Okay, so let's open this up for discussion with the planning commission. So we'll start with Rexel Cronin. What are your thoughts on the motion?
Um, I question the fact that it's a motion to deny, it should just be a motion to and let the commissioners vote up or down. Alex, I may ask you to weigh in on that part, the motion started out with it's to deny this. It should be the motion to look at the variance or whatever portion of it it is, and then the commissioners can decide yes or no from there. The fact that it comes out with a denial right out of the gate, I don't think is a correct motion and I could be wrong and I will defer to city attorney.
If the maker of the motion so chooses, they can couch that as a motion to approve, subject to the conditions stated. Or, you know, some, or or, you know, that that may give the applicant clearer direction. But but equally, a motion to deny as presented for the reasons stated is also appropriate and, you know, the second half of that motion is is they would be willing to to approve, you know, a project within the bounds of of the square footage in the ten-foot garage.
I say I'm corrected, thank you very much, appreciate the education, thank you, no comment. Okay, Commissioner Jack Show.
I have no problem with the motion.
Commissioner Burger.
I I I still stand behind my motion, whether it says approve with conditions or deny as as presented. It's, it it still needs to be brought down to twenty-seven hundred square feet and It's it. It still needs to be brought down to twenty seven hundred square feet, and I'd like to see the garage height. No more than ten.
Thank you. Commissioner Krieger.
You know, I think the ten feet. Is probably not unreasonable. I'm not sure what the structural implications are for that, but. That would certainly seem to be a reasonable. Contingency to put on.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Wood. And and this is this is the point, and I'll come back. This is the point where if you have anything you want to, if you want to amend this motion anyway, this is the time to bring that up.
Um, oh, I just saw somebody put a chat that the garage is ten feet. Is that? Is that is that correct? Okay, so the garage is already at ten feet tall.
So I'll amend, I'll amend then, I'm sorry.
Okay, and and I I would say if we can approve bait and then bring it down to twenty seven hundred.
I'm just checking that garage. Well, it looks like the plan says twelve to me unless I'm missing something. Okay, for me, I I'd like to see this back to twenty seven hundred square feet as far as the variance is concerned. For the reasons that Commissioner Burger has talked about, and I would also like to make sure that if the garage is in fact ten feet, that still seems awful tall to me. So. Anyway. All right, so let's I'd like to call for a vote now. So I'm gonna I'm gonna I'm gonna. I hesitate to do this, but Mr. Turgeon, I'm going to let you have. Three minutes max.
I don't even need three. All I'm saying is we've come back twice now. All I'm asking for. Is if you want it reduced seventy six square feet, fine. If you want us to bring that back down to ten feet, we can show the dimension to be ten feet. Condition it. You have two little items that you're conditioning. Condition it. Say, we all approve the project and condition it with this, so we don't have to come back again. It's it costs them money. They have these story polls up. We want to pull them down. All we want to do is get this approved. If the only thing is seventy six square feet, then so be it. We'll reduce it seventy six square feet, and when it goes through a review, that's what will be there. If you need it down to ten feet, we'll reduce it down to ten feet, but approve it with conditions. That's what we do instead of coming back a third time when we've appeased everything. Then that that's all we're asking. Just approve it with conditions. It's I I mean, it's it. It makes sense because if then we have to approve to appeal to city council, I mean, this is just going to get silly. I mean, we're coming with a buy right project with heights that are right. Everything's that that that's correct. The only thing we're asking for was seventy six square feet, and this was the first time that the twelve feet or ten feet. Was brought up about the about the 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 garage.
I think if you.
Brought up last.
I think if you'll stop and let the motion or amend his motion, you're going to get what you want.
Okay, I don't know.
I think Mr. Gerton's a wise man. Uh, then I will rephrase and actually going back to what Mr. Rexel Cronin was saying. Changing the language from denied to to conditional. I I propose that we approve it. At twenty seven hundred square feet with a roof line for the garage, no more. Than ten feet from the grade. Does that sound appropriate? And when I say the grade, just for clarification, that is, that is the the ground height at the foot of the garage. So there's no suggesting that it's at the street level or anything else from the foot of the garage. The floor, ground level there. Ten feet roof line, twenty seven hundred square feet.
Attorney.
I was just going to say, Chair, that if indeed that's the the pleasure of the commission, then I think it obviates the need for the variance, and that can just sort of. You know, whether the applicant wants to withdraw that or just deem that moot if the project's going to get approved at the twenty seven hundred. Square foot limited, just obviates the need for the for that variance.
Ms. Harwin, is there anything that you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Have we heard enough to satisfy? A, B, and C, I guess, but if we're going to go, if they are in fact going to go twenty seven hundred square feet, then we don't need a variance.
Correct. I would agree with city attorney too. Yes, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Jack Shaw.
I'd like to ask Mike to put a condition on that. That the an engineer look at that wall to make sure that the retaining wall is okay. If that's acceptable to him.
That leads that leads me to a question like, you know, there's. I don't know if I this would go to John or who would who would address this or Karen. But I I hate to assume, but isn't there some sort of assumption that it would go through engineering before? The plan was approved. Not by us, but by the city itself. I mean, I I I would think that the the very experienced architect and also the the clients would want to protect themselves from litigation.
Yeah, that's. There's nothing to say that you can't condition that, but that that is something that we already handle through plan check and through the building process.
So to remove redundancy, I mean, George, is that okay? I mean, I have no problem with that, but I don't think.
It's fine. It's fine with me.
The hoops already jumped through.
Yes, thank you.
So I'll leave the motion as as is.
Okay, so. We are going to. Mr. Lorca, how do we? If there's no need for the variance, how do we know that that's in fact going to be at twenty seven hundred square feet?
The when it comes to the building process, Joe Hadley, our building official, will look at the plans and the resubmitted plans. And if it's in conformance with the twenty seven hundred square feet, then that'll just continue through the building, through the building process and the building official.
Okay, so then we then all we're doing is architectural review. We're all all we're trying.
Right, right. So if 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 the motion is twenty seven hundred square feet, then then it obviates the need for the variance, and if the applicant's okay with that. Then I think it's just a architectural review at that point.
Okay, so it's architectural review twenty two dash zero one, and we don't need to satisfy A, B, C with architectural review.
Correct.
Okay, all right. So with the amendment, so we are only talking about A R C twenty two dash zero one, and we just want to assure that the. Roof line of the garage is at ten feet from great. That's the stipulation, correct? Okay. So I'd like to call for a roll call vote, please, Karen.
Commissioner Wood. Commissioner Burger. Commissioner Krieger.
Hi.
Commissioner Jack Shaw.
Hi.
Commissioner Rex Del Cronin.
Hi.
Chair Heyworth.
Hi. Okay, so variant, the variance goes away. It's to be to be built at twenty seven hundred square foot feet. A R C twenty two dash zero one passes with the stipulation of the roof line being no taller than ten feet. So before any work is done, there's a twenty five day appeal period. So I thank everybody for their input.
Here with I I I I would like to say thank you.
My pleasure. No problem. Okay, moving on. Turn it over to City Manager Gerton, who is going to give us a. Rumor on short term rental ordinances.
I'm going to give you a brief update of where we've come as a city in terms of. Short term rentals since we. Since we implemented the short term rental ordinance back in two thousand and eighteen. You know, we have a fairly permissive. Short term rental ordinance. We don't have a cap. Other jurisdictions have a cap, so it's been a fairly successful program so far. And, you know, staff has done a great job putting together a program. Where we get sufficient information from applicants before we. Give them a license and we have them put together a nuisance abatement. Plan so that we know who we're dealing with. If we get complaints from neighbors. We have a time limit for responses to complaints to be handled and a follow up process to make sure that they were handled. Timely, effectively, and. Mitigation steps have been taken to try to make sure that those kinds of complaints don't happen again. So it's been it's been a pretty popular program and a successful program. We have a mix. Of what we call hosted and unhosted short term rentals. Hosted would be people who live on site. They count the house as their primary residence. They may rent it out. When they go on vacation, or they may just rent out a portion of the house or room in the house to help supplement their income. And those generally, we we get no complaints about those. Then we have others that are called unhosted, and those are typically. Folks who don't, it's a second house or it's an investment property, and they just rented out as a vacation home as a short term rental. And so we've been getting some comments from. Some members in the public and getting some questions. People aren't really clear on. On how many short term rentals we have in the community, where they're located. People have different. You know, feelings about, you know, what the impact is is being had on the community and and on our. Available housing for long term residents. So I thought that this would be a good time to come and talk with you all since we start with you with land use. Options and land use proposals and and kind of go over where we are. And if it's the pleasure of the commission and you want us to go and and research what other. Surrounding jurisdictions are doing and other jurisdictions similar to us up and down the state. In terms of maybe a little bit stricter regulations, then we can come back with a report on what that looks like and. Maybe some options if you want to consider amending our ordinance to put in some more restrictions. But just really quickly. See, I'll share my screen just to show you the numbers of where we are. Yeah, so I could figure out how to make this a slide. Well, anyway. I can't see because the bar up top blocking my view. But anyway, this is where we are in numbers. So you'll see in the hosted. I I put down the streets that they're located on and the numbers that we have. You can see that the hosted are pretty evenly spread out. Just one per street for a total of seven. Again, those are the ones where. Those are the. The ones where the people live on site, and so generally you have somebody that if we get a complaint. There's somebody on site that we can respond to and let them know what the nature of the complaint is, and they can deal with it immediately. And then the unhosted, we have a total of fifteen. You can see they're fairly spread out except for on Paloma is where we have the biggest concentration. Again, those are the ones that are typically rented as a whole house as a vacation rental. Again, I think because we have such a responsive. Police department, because we have responsive staff, and also because we we built a fairly robust. Requirement in terms of putting together a nuisance abatement plan with each of the licensees when they come in. So they know that we're taking this seriously. They put the information in the windows of the rentals, so. Any neighbors who have a complaint can see who they can call. To get things dealt with. So it's been a really successful program, and in the year that I've been here. Karen can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we've only had one or two complaints. And those were responded to quickly. And we were able to come up with a mitigation plan. They generally result revolved around parking. And we were able to deal with some of the parking issues in that area, and and since that time, we haven't had a single complaint, right, Karen?
Correct. You are correct.
Okay, so yeah, so it's been a pretty successful program. You know, one of the things that we want to do going forward is have a a map so that people are clear of where short term rentals are so they can see. What how it's impacting in the neighborhood and, you know. What areas we're seeing concentrations. We are starting to get as as houses go on the market. Because it's such a robust market and short term rentals since. The pandemic has eased off, have really kind of taken off in the area because there's such a demand for people to want to come here. We are starting to see an uptick in. Folks looking at houses that are on the market as potential investment properties and as. Unhosted short term rentals. So there may be an uptick going forward if if we don't. Want to restrict it the way it is. We want to keep it the way it is. There could be an uptick in houses going off of the market. For long term residents and instead turning over into vacation homes. So I think it's a it. It's a good time to be talking about this now before. It becomes an issue and. Go out and see what the experience has been in some other. Regions where they've been a little bit more heavily impacted with short term rentals and demand for short term rentals and learn from what. Has worked for them, what hasn't worked for them, and then come back. You know, maybe November, December and and have a more in depth discussion with you all. With some research on what we found and and then, you know, maybe provide some options. If you all think it's a good idea to amend the ordinance to restrict some things just for general. Discussion going forward here, if you all want to contemplate it, one of the things that's becoming more common. Because we do, you know, we all recognize we live in a state that's in high demand for people to live here, and we don't have adequate housing. In certain areas for all the people who want to live there. So we are in a housing crisis and. So, you know, I I think that it makes sense to at least talk about, do we want to preserve as many houses as possible? For people who live here, who are our workforce and who are community members, and if so, then what does that look like in terms of a cap? A common way of looking at that jurisdictions are starting to look at a percentage cap of available housing. It's usually between one and five percent. Just so you all know what that looks like here, you know, we have about seven hundred and fifty houses in. Del Rio, I believe, so you're looking at seven and a half to eight. Unhosted, if you did one percent, as you can see. We're we're already at about two percent, and I say two percent because we have fifteen total unhosted, but three of those are actually listed as. Primary residents, so. That's something we may need to work on and tweak because I have a feeling that those are folks who live here full time, but then they go somewhere else on vacation. They have a second house. They go on vacation and then they rent out their whole house. While they're gone and out of town, so that's why those numbers are a little weird. But anyway, so, yeah, so I just wanted you to see, you know, generally we have twenty two. We thought we had thirty. A couple of months ago. But we went and cleaned up our records and we actually had a few that. Did not renew their licenses this year, so that dropped it back down to twenty two. Which is about where we were at a year ago when I came into the city, so. So I just want to give you an update on where we are with the numbers, where they're all located. And, you know, if you would like to talk about this and you'd like to talk about possibly amending the ordinance, we can come back in a couple of months with some research and start. Start that conversation. So if that's the direction you want to give us. So with that, I'm available for questions.
I'll let you take the floor, John, and you can entertain. I see Burger and Jack Shaw have questions.
All right, Commissioner Jack Shaw.
Uh, well, I'm just curious. At what point? Do we put a cap on it? You know, I don't think it'll. Go down. And with a housing crisis, we ought to, you know, I do our part and limit it so people can buy a house. But I would I would like to look at it and in the future, put a cap on it. I have no problem with the ones I I know of five. Over on our side here, and there is no problem that I've heard of with any of them. But. My question would be. But my question would be, at what point do we put a cap on it? And I would just as soon look at it now rather than the future and just say, you know, sorry, you can't do it anymore and sort of. End their lease, quote unquote, you know. So I I would like to look at it further in in the future and and do put a cap on it.
Okay, thank you. Questioner Burger. Oh, you're on mute.
Hold on.
Now we got you.
Okay, my my, sorry about that. My my first is actually a question is, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but Fisher Krieger, did you know that I we have an S T R at our house?
Your house?
Ye- yes.
No, I did not know you.
The reason why I bring that up is because is. Gary doesn't know that because we we do our best to screen. And we don't rent our room out. It's it's a single room in the house. It has a separate entrance. We don't. Rent the room out when we're not home, because we have a responsibility to all of our neighbors and ourselves to. Mitigate on the spot any issues that might occur. We did it because my wife lost her job and we needed the income. That said. You know, it's a huge responsibility and. You know, cities like P G do have a cap. Pacific Grove has, I think, a three hundred S T R cap unless the only the only. Thing that would would. Wouldn't be affected is if you're renting out a room in your home where where it's not the whole house. But they also had a huge problem with on their short little blocks like we used to on Eighteenth Street in Pacific Grove. On the one hundred block and they had five S T Rs in the one hundred block. And that was just too much. I mean, it was really affected us, loud music, parking. And the other, I think they also have a like a per block linear fee, like. How far away can one be from the other, not just by the block? But something else to consider, because we also have multi resident. Buildings here, condos and all that. You know, especially multi level, you know. An S T R tenant that lives that is using a condo that has another condo below it. Are they going to be as sensitive to noise and who's going to manage that? So I think we definitely, this is a good idea to look at this. And also, you know, I guess I Airbnb, as an example, does do a, they they do screen, they do vet. And there is also a a vetting process after the after someone's rented their property. Would they host this person again? Were there any issues, even damage to the property? It's all handled by the rental service. But yeah, I I I think this is great that we're looking at it.
Christian Krieger.
Yeah, no, I think it's a a great time to be looking at it. I'm glad we're doing it. And I did know about mics. I do I do know about our unhosted one across the street. And it's 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 pretty darn active and it's never been an issue, so. But, you know, I think we don't, we won't avoid getting into situation P G did where. They woke up one day and realized they had way too many, and then now they're in all these, we've been reading about in the paper, all the legal fights are in with trying to. Tell people they can't do it anymore. I mean, I know that they're they're, they had a year to year thing written into the. Into the permit, but they didn't stop people from going to court, so. You know, you get to go water institute out there trying to do away with any controls at all on S T R, so I think. We need to jump in there and do something. I do think we need to do something, it's a. You know, it's a social justice question. We need places for people to live, so I would think that. I like to present the idea, I think, but it also needs to include like it's some sort of density measurement. Like what Mike was talking about and 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 you mentioned a little bit too. So, you know, how close are they all together, like six on Paloma? I mean, you know, hopefully those are spread out a little bit. So I think there's a density element to it. I think there's a, you know, probably some kind of percentage element to it, and I think you need to. Differentiate between, you know, hosted and unhosted, and I would even add a third category. Though the the unhosted ones for people like just rented out during car week or something, or you know, the pro am. To me, that's not the same as like what's across the street from me where they're renting it out almost every week to someone different. I I would think that's almost like a. A third category, because to me, that's probably less problematic than just the pure unhosted, so anyway. Plenty of time to talk about all that later, but I think it's a great idea. I think it's. We definitely want to have that conversation sooner than later, because we wake up one day and also we got. You know, forty or fifty of them, and we would decide that's too many. It's going to be. Going to be a big pain. We read about us in the papers in Pacific Grove.
Right, and and actually, you you reminded me of something I wanted to mention that I forgot. Because it is, it is important to talk to the folks who are our current licensees. And, you know, get their input and what's working for them, what's not working, why are they doing it, all that kind of stuff, because. You you're right, P G got into trouble when they just kind of ripped the carpet out from over under underneath people who are already. Operating short term rentals and then they were told they couldn't, so we we definitely don't want to do that. Like I said. Our program's working well, and so we want to work with everyone who's currently operating. Commissioner Rex Del Cronin.
Yeah, I agree with everything that's been said so far. I think we do need to look at some cap or limit. And whether it's density or so many units per street. So they're not stacked one on top of the other. I mean, the reality, unfortunately, with today's housing market. Is if you want an investment property in Del Ray Oaks, you can't afford to buy it. And then just rent it out as a monthly rental and make your payments on it with your taxes and insurance. So you turn it into a short term rental where you're getting two or three grand a a week versus two or three grand a month. It's just economics. I want houses for people to live in full time. I own two rentals in Seaside, and I'm probably. Twenty to twenty five percent under market rent. Because the people that live there need a place to live and they take good care of my place and they've been there forever. So but I think you do need to, I think we do need to cap it at some point, and we do need to make some limits on how many on a street. Like the Paloma, if they're spread out across Paloma, that's a long street, if I remember correctly. It's probably not a big issue, but if they're all stacked together at the end of the block, you get it was a pretty wild block parties going on. So I think that, and then I don't know, I haven't read the current ordinance, is there. A number of complaints before we pull their license or suspend it or make them come and explain what's going on? I think maybe a little something in the enforcement, you know, if we get multiple complaints. That the licensee needs to come in and explain to either the. City Council Planning Commission staff, I'm not sure where you would take it per se. But I think you have to start putting some limitations on things. I mean, we've we've been lucky, you know, everything is is good so far. Like you said. We haven't had a complaint in who knows how long. But I think we just need to kind of maybe stiffen up the ordinances if it's not in there. I haven't honestly haven't read it. And and put some limits and caps on it. That's, I think it's a great time to start looking at it.
Yeah, yeah, I like the suggestion about. The. Some sort of triggering mechanism for when it comes for review, because right now it puts it all to my discretion. Commissioner Wood.
I'm really surprised we don't see any in the Oaks.
Yeah, you know.
That's just really surprising to me.
I wanted to check with Commissioner Getzel before the meeting, but she's in Germany, and so I couldn't get to go with her, but.
Yeah.
I've heard and I haven't confirmed, so don't quote me on this, but I've.
Okay.
This that they don't allow them, that it's part of their C C and R, so you can't.
Okay, that would make sense. All right, sounds good. And yeah, I definitely think the, everything everyone's saying, we got to look at the percentages and make sure they're not all bunched together and. It seems like it's it's working for what we're doing now, so it's just making sure you don't get over overboard with it all.
Christian Burger.
I think we also need to define short term rental, because there's not only the Airbnb, but there's also. Furnish. I think it's furnished finders and it it tends to cater to more of. Traveling professionals and 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 most of it, I I've not rented through that site. But they they sometimes do like a two week to over thirty days and. Traveling nurses is really like in this area. A friend of mine has is doing that on on one of his, he has a little, a little studio. And that that is another service that's more long term, so I think we need to look at what is an S T R. Pacific Grove, I think, says anything thirty days and over is not considered an S T R, so. You could have a month to month situation. Just keep keep that in mind.
Right, thank you. Yeah, that's good. I hadn't heard of that one, so well, it's always evolving. Good chair, I don't think I see any other hands raised, so maybe go out to the public.
Yeah.
Any any comments from anybody in the public?
Could we unshare because we can't see anything but?
Oh, yeah.
Four or five people.
Interesting. Did you unmute it?
Okay, yeah, now you're unmuted.
We we're just listening. It's very interesting.
Okay, thank you.
Was that it, John?
Yeah, I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Interesting stuff. Yeah, so we probably all read this and. Feed more information to John. Mike's insight on this, having having an S T R is beneficial.
I want to be clear, I'm not trying to eliminate competition.
Okay, thank you. So announcements by planning commissioners, Mr. Rex Del Cronin. No comment, Mr. Cronin?
Oh. Sorry, I thought I hit mute. No, I'm good. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Commissioner Jack Shaw.
I'll remind everybody that October first, we have our annual picnic. I hope. Everybody shows up. It looks like it's going to be the planning stage, looks like it's going to be pretty nice. We've got a, we're going to have a kitty parade down Angeles, so that'll be. I think a first, if not at least a second in a long time. And I personally want to sort of apologize to the applicant in the previous thing there on work and the neighbors. You know, it's not like just putting up a window. It was a major project and you you can't expect it just to. Lam slam go through, you know, it's going to take a couple, if not three, maybe four, so. I'm glad it it ended where it was at and. So. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks for that comment, George. Commissioner Burger.
No, I appreciate everyone being here today. And I I hope ultimately that the applicants appreciate that we're taking their. Their project seriously and and that the hamsters understand that we are taking their concerns and and on both sides. I know that the applicants are in here to to hear this, but you know, it's. It's it's tough to appease everyone and there's give and take, and I think that there's been some wins on both sides on this.
It's my. Commissioner Krieger.
Nope, nothing like George said, the picnic.
Commissioner Wood.
Okay, so, um, yeah, oh, but a night before the picnic, there might be a movie night, so. Keep 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 posted for that. It's in the works. Friday before the picnic. And Ghostbusters, I know that much.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to miss ballons. I'll be out of I'll be out of town and. I don't think my kitty would walk on a leash very well, so I won't have my kitty in the parade.
Oh, come on, mine does.
Parade, I missed something.
It is a parade for anything you want it to be, from what I hear.
Intended for the kids, like little kids on their bikes, they're going to go from the the head of Angeles down to the park and. And, yeah, I have a little parade. They were getting all parents to get very excited about it, all getting dressed out and getting costumes, so. Should be should be fun.
Oh, so there's an age max.
No, no, I don't think there's a max. I'm saying it's most for kids, but but hey, if you want to join, you show up on your trike, you come on down.
Oh, no, I I don't do well on my bike on the asphalt. But we won't go there, okay.
I I mentioned kitty parade, but we're all kids at heart, so all people are invited.
All right, have a good evening, everyone.
And I just wanted to thank everybody and everybody for their patience and working through this and, yeah, I think we all did a good job. Thank you. And I will not be at the next meeting, and I think Commissioner Burger will not be at the next meeting as well, so.
We we would like to say thank you also. Thank you for for listening to us and taking our our viewpoints into account, and I'm sorry if I got emotional sometimes, tried not to. But, you know, but I would like to clarify, somebody has already looked at the wall to make sure that it's okay.
They will.
Or they will. Is that correct?
Yeah, we'll look at it as part of plan check.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. Thanks for your time. I I'm I'm sorry you've been through the mill.
Mike, do you want to explain to everyone what a coustion fart is?
I'm not going to touch it.
All right, well, shall I explain?
If you care to.
I'm very careful. And what there's something that you wanted to experience down in Southern California.
It's German, Denise.
Cou- coustion fart, coastal drive. That's what it means. We're doing a little car rally with some friends, BMW friends, so that that in case anyone's curious, or maybe not.
Okay, if there's nothing more, next meeting is October twelfth at six P M. Thank you all, and this meeting is adjourned.
Say good night, Dick.
Good night.